Okay, seven o'clock. We will call the meeting's order. Take roll, Kyle.
Yes.
Kevin.
Yeah.
Lee. Craig.
Up.
And Steve.
Yep.
Consent agenda. Motion. Kyle, do I have a second? Kevin? We'll take roll. Kyle?
Yep.
Kevin?
Yeah.
Craig?
Yep.
And Steve?
Yep.
Visitors?
Yep.
Alright, still seven o'clock. We'll all, we'll open the public hearing on the fiscal year 2024 budget.
The proposed levy is thirteen point eight four five zero one. Revenues are one million three fifty one, five hundred thirty one. And the total expenditures including transfers out are one million two hundred eighty eight nine one. There were no papers filed or any notes.
We have a motion to close the public hearing. Craig, do I have a second? Steve? We'll take roll. Kyle?
Yep.
Kevin?
Yep.
Craig?
Yep.
And Steve?
Yep.
It is seven oh two. Right. Public works report? Give it here someplace.
Right here.
Do it on the table.
Didn't really have much. We had our, um, sanitary survey or water inspection. Everything was good. No deficiencies yet. Take care of that. Then I talked with the DNR. I asked them to put the well number three back on the emergency status. Just because it's too much of a pain to try to, try to use with the order issue. Um, and doing that might eliminate some of our testing too.
Well, eventually someday we need to figure out what we can do to treat that so we can use it because it's ridiculous to have a brand new well sitting there and not being used. So... But I understand since it's a deep well that it's going to smell, so... Anything else, gentlemen? Anything else, Ron?
Yeah, just should have a list of streets, uh, going over the, going around with the guy tomorrow to look at someone. We did a lot of them last year, so my list really isn't all that big this year. We got that extra one last year, so it took care of a lot.
Well, you're gonna get some hot mix to fix the ones that Culver dug up after they...
He might try to go work something with it up today and it's still too cold. Stuff against cold mix. You gotta have a hot box if you're gonna use hot mix. We don't have that, so you gotta, I guess in the days where it stays warm consistently for it to work, otherwise it just clumps and doesn't stay.
That's the pile down there at the old...
Yeah.
Anything else, guys?
Yeah, they didn't have time to do anything.
Okay, that's fine. Alright, we'll move right along. Community, you got anything for us? Okay. Finance, we'll go to seven, and then A, discuss some possible action approving the resolution adopting the fiscal year 2024 budget. Craig, do I have a second? Kevin? We'll take roll. Kyle?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yeah.
Craig?
Yep.
And Steve?
Yep.
Discuss some possible action approving resolution to set public hearing for the budget amendment fiscal year 2023.
May ninth at seven o'clock. It's in your packet, um, to manage the revenues, a total of fifty-five thousand one forty-nine, and expenditures, two hundred twelve thousand three hundred seventeen. You should have a little sheet like this that tells you what all... That should be probably in the folder.
It should be in your... Finally, yeah.
Should be right after all the budget stuff.
Budget amendment.
So like the library, we have some things, um, Congress has some things. We have our, um, the electric, I'm a sewer, so we have to run the two blowers now. Can you see that?
Yep.
So what line are we on?
For the water project, you know, ran into a couple things. So we had to have contractors come in and work on that. I think we got a new, a different pump, but, um, that's a list station.
Yeah, there's one, there's a record right there, I'm assuming.
And then the insurance increases. And there was also the daycare, the transfer of the, I had to transfer the two thousand eight forty-six that we paid that was left in our operating fund. I had to pay that out of the loan funds, I had to transfer that from operating to loans, so there's that too.
Do I have a motion to set the public hearing? Kyle, do I have a second? Steve? Take a roll. Kyle?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yeah.
Craig?
Yep.
And Steve?
Yep.
Steve, discuss some possible action approving resolution for insurance and blanket bond.
Um, I'm still waiting on the building breakdown. They sent me one, but it's not, it was like thirty-nine thousand nine twenty-six, and what they quoted was thirty-eight thousand one twenty-six. But we can still approve the blanket bond that covers everybody's far suspected stuff like that. And as soon as they give me the breakdown for the three eight one four six, I paid everything except for the building insurance. I'm waiting on that, so...
Do I have a motion to approve the blanket bond? Kyle, do I have a second? Craig? Take a roll. Kyle?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yeah.
Craig?
Yep.
And Steve?
Yep.
Anyway, we're on that insurance, um, we talked, um, a little bit same thing, but we upped it from a thousand to ten thousand for the deductible.
Uh-huh.
Now, is that for, um, each claim?
No.
No, that's just per year.
That's...
Well, it's free...
Per incident.
That's what I...
Yeah, it is free to claim.
It's per incident.
So like a windstorm phone...
But, but if it hits City Hall and the fire station and the ambulance...
It's all combined.
That's one incident. But if it just hits the fire station and then two months later it hits the water tower...
Right.
Two deductibles.
Two deductibles, right. Okay, that's, and then, so, question was, um, like on the fire department, so the truck, say truck was in the ditch for some oddball reason. It's gonna be ten thousand?
Not for the autos.
Okay, that's what...
Yeah, not for the autos, just the buildings.
That's just the buildings.
Yeah, you don't save that much going to a higher deductible.
Okay, that was a question, um, some of them had, that's what I thought, so the, still the five hundred or a thousand for them? Okay.
That didn't change at all.
That didn't change, we left that the same, that's what I thought.
Didn't make a big difference.
No, I thought it was just the building, I mean...
Okay. Moving along. Discuss some possible action approving twenty eighty agreement with Midland Ambulance.
I don't have that from the attorney yet. It's one that they'll have to do.
Okay. Discuss and possible action approving one volunteer fire contract for fiscal year 2024.
So we had approved that, but hadn't, hadn't given it to Dave yet, so, you know, are we gonna, is he gonna redo that? The eighteen thousand insurance?
That was for the, yeah, they agreed.
I think that was, that was talked about last meeting that...
Yeah, they agreed on that.
I think they went along with that, that, cause if, you know, it's like everybody said, it's not, if we have to buy a new three hundred thousand dollar truck, it's not the city's responsible to pay that insurance.
Yeah, okay, so I don't know.
Do they need to fill something out, or, I mean...
I mean, if he can just, if he has the contract or wants to email it to me, I can retype it up. Can we, do we have...
Well, the contract, the only contract that we would have, or in the fire department, would be just that thirty-eight fifty for fire coverage. So see, we're just putting towards the city's just paying eighteen thousand towards the insurance. So probably gonna have to be a whole new thing where he done.
Yeah.
You know what I mean, cause that was just thirty-eight fifty for the fire coverage, city always paid the insurance before, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think it's seventy...
So I don't know if you're gonna have to reword that, or re...
I think it's ten thousand insurance.
Probably have to redo the whole thing. Cause when you're paying the thirty-eight fifty, it's more like...
Just doing the eighteen thousand towards insurance. So, yeah, I'm guessing, I mean, however you gotta do it, I mean...
City of Wyoming also agrees to provide insurance on blah blah blah, so yeah, we'd have to put up to eighteen thousand on that and then change the other. So, yeah.
Maybe if you can get it done, or, I don't know what you, do take, like if I have Dave stop there.
If, if he's got it digitally...
Yeah.
Then you have to email it to him, or then they can...
It's one page, I can, I actually have to, I think.
I'll see what he's got, and, I'll, I'll just have him swing over, then you can, that'll work.
Okay. Discuss some possible action approving pool policy.
So they can either get... I don't see that in the file, but, um, they can either, either way, they need to contact City Hall prior to filling their pool, themselves, so that they get the sewer reduction, or come on and pay for the bulk water, and then contact the fire department and take that receipt.
And then this here, so, we talked about that last time, the fifteen, fifteen dollars per thousand.
Yeah, so before it was ten per thousand and a minimum charge of thirty-five dollars.
Right.
Yeah. So...
Well, this says here at the minimum charge of sixty dollars.
Yeah, we're, I just kinda think it's... Because it's usually people that are gonna buy bulk are out of town people.
Well, let me tell you, I got a lot of grief at the last meeting over that. They're all writing it down on the bulletin board down there, now the gallons for the fires and the burns and stuff.
They're gonna turn it in each month after each meeting.
Or, or it's, they're supposed to write down every month, and they, Rod might wanna check that paper hanging underneath that's been there forever. I've written some of them on there, but...
Well, we just said that they're gonna start...
Yeah, well...
For April, cause I mean...
They are, they are now, like, it's, it's written down there, but...
Well, this here's kinda confusing here, though, cause before we were talking about the thousand or fifteen hundred, it was like thirty-five dollars, right? I mean, it would, is that what it was?
I think so, yeah, it was thirty-five a minimum.
Thirty-five per load is what her...
Yeah.
Well, we can set a separate...
Right.
Policy, so then, so then the, we just have to, you know, get it together and then put it into the ordinance. You know, so if the, the fire department wants ten dollars a load, or, you know, just...
Well, that's different, that's different.
But I'm, but I'm just saying, but if they, if, it can be wrapped into here, that is so much per gallon, per thousand, and then...
What's gonna, what do you say, takes like, someone would take forty-five hundred gallons?
Well, let's just top it, depends on the size of the pool. How much, how much fifteen hundred?
So this is what Monticello does, just for example.
Oh, yeah, there you go.
And then they split it up, they shoot in a sheet that says, like, the city gets the cost of the water, then the fire department got a twenty-five dollar truck fee, and then so much on top of that, and I don't know.
So that's the same as it, what it was, I, I mean... I mean, I said eighty-five hundred gallons is two hundred, it's two fifty, I mean...
Up to you guys, this was just an example, whatever you guys wanted.
Are we, I thought we agreed to, that they're just paying the minimum per month?
No, this is for bulk water delivery.
Oh, bulk water.
This is, the minimum per month is just the, the businesses, or the...
Yeah, this is like somebody that's coming in and gonna do boring, and they're gonna be buying a bunch of water from us, or...
This ain't got nothing to do with pools.
Or swimming pools. Because that's, this is the current rate here, in this, which is fifteen...
This is higher than the one...
That one is, that's one example that we had from Monticello. That's their rates.
So, say, we had forty-five hundred gallons, what would be?
Would be fifteen dollars per thousand gallons, so...
So it'd be...
Sixty bucks, six, seventy bucks.
Yeah.
Give or take.
Approximately seventy bucks. With the minimum dollar, with the, this says a minimum service charge of sixty dollars. Or no?
Yeah.
That, that, oh yeah, so that's the minimum charge, no matter what, is sixty.
So they take four thousand, or take...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right? So, the minimum is sixty, whether they take a thousand or four thousand.
Right.
Okay.
You can have it less if you want, but you guys gotta hook up a meter to the hydrant, and that's...
Well, I think one of their gripes was they're volunteer, and they think they should get it cheaper. Is that what, is that what they're talking about?
Well, yeah, kinda, I mean, they don't understa, I tried to explain to them, it's not the, it's not that they're trying, but it... I said, the numbers start matching the DNR for the, out there, and they're, well, they never had, oh, they, everybody, and they're all yelling and screaming, and... I'm a fire, you know, I don't, whatever.
Well, the problem is the DNR wants it now.
Oh, I know, I do, so...
We got another, it's in this, we just got this new report. Today, we got this one, and it's in the back of that one, you can go to the last page, you can show that what you want.
I mean, this one here, we can just take a copy of that and hang it up the fire station, and that way they know what to tell them, I mean...
Well, I got, I had it earlier today, whatever I typed, um, but I...
So ten thousand gallons would be, what is it, three hundred bucks?
Three hundred dollars.
Huh?
Three hundred dollars, what's those there, Monticello, yeah.
Right, if you do a whole pool.
That one year I went over...
Ten thousand gallons here would be a hundred and fifty dollars.
Right, I mean, yeah, yeah.
Right.
Here.
Yep.
According to this.
Yep.
It's been a number of years ago, I filmed Rod Eaton's over there at Onze at that time, and he just gave me a check for a hundred and fifty dollars.
I mean, I think, as long as we're going off through this, leave it the same, and as long as they're paying for it, and...
Yeah. I'll do a, a poster for you with...
Say they take less, I mean, they guarantee that's what, that's what someone's gonna do, they, oh, we all got some money.
I mean, for, fill your pool, I mean, top it off seventy bucks, I mean, you can't afford that, you shouldn't be swimming.
Yeah, yeah, I, I know, I guarantee it, it's...
Well, but, if, if, if they're filling it from a hydrant, put a meter on the damn thing and be done with it, and then that ends all, is what they take and what they take.
Do we have a meter when we flush hydrants?
They know what the flows are.
Yeah.
And they take per time. And that's how they figure out how much gallons they use when they're flushing.
Do you have a meter for the hydrants?
There's, there's, there's a meter here, that'll fit out a two and a half.
It was down there for a while, the fire station, but I think Rod went and got it when they were getting water for them.
I mean, the truck loads are within, they're close, fifteen hundred gallons and...
Yeah.
That's what I, I typed up and was gonna put in the newsletter and on the webpage. Does that work?
Easy enough?
We can pass around if you want.
That's where they were coming up with that truck. It's pretty close, thirteen fifty, fifteen hundred.
Well, what, what is our tank, or will it be twenty-eight hundred?
Twenty-two.
Yeah, twenty, I knew it was two thousand something.
But the other one, when they were going off, that was like thirteen or fifteen.
Like you said, you, everybody knows what their pool holds.
Right, within hundred gallons.
Yeah.
Hey, you're right, I don't like it's up to the city to, sure, to have fun all summer.
No.
And I told them that too, about they're gonna have to come up and pay ahead of time, and they didn't like that either. Don't matter.
Maybe they should have some...
The only problem, the, the reason is that they don't like change.
I know.
And, nobody likes change, I don't like change.
I hear you.
No, I get it, I get it.
Move down to the council, do I get free wire?
No, that's the first thing the auditor checks is, he wants a list of everybody's account that's on the council and employees, and he makes sure that they're paying on time and being disconnected like everybody else.
I'd make a motion, we leave it the same and charge for the...
Well, I mean, we don't really need a motion for that, do we? Because it's, it's just, it's the bulk water rates, so... We just have to make sure that, if you put a little poster together for the fire department, that, that way they know that here's the rules that they gotta play by. Yep. For a pool. Okay, uh, discuss some possible action, the first reading of an ordinance to amend water bulk rates and remove special rates.
So we basically just got rid of the special rates section, and then we want to raise the bulk water price two percent. Future rates that was in there before, remember that? You know, that been there because of our bones, and they want us to be saving money for our future projects.
No, we could leave it the same, or, or that two percent. Uh, what about on the minimum charges? I would hate to see the two percent go up for the people that are using a hundred gallons and two hundred gallons.
Well, we, we did go through and look at what the two percent would be, and it was only, it was two dollars.
Two dollars.
Two dollars a month.
But I mean, the people that ain't going through it shouldn't get the increase. You know, they're staying underneath the minimum, right?
Well, we can't do, I don't think we can do...
You can't, you can't break it out that way.
Yeah.
You put it into the program, and whatever, if you raise it two percent, the program raises it two percent. It's all the way across the board. It doesn't care if they use fifty gallons a month, or five hundred thousand gallons a month, it's, it's a two percent.
And I don't, we were looking at, I don't think there was been a raise or an increase since twenty-ten.
I think our last water project is when we had, uh, the big raise, and I think once we've raised the water two percent.
Have they raised the sewer rates at all, or, they haven't raised anything since two thousand-ten?
No, we did it two percent a couple of years ago, but, just on the water, right?
Just on the water. The sewer hasn't raised since we did that project down there. And I would say, next fiscal year, you wanna do your two percent raises, cause you're just gonna end up playing catch-up if you don't start doing those, cause everything else, you know, has gone up.
We gotta notice today on some of the chemicals that we use at the water plant, that they're gonna just go up two to five percent. Not this month, but basically every month for the next year, they're figuring.
Two percent a month?
Yes. Just for example. So, for whatever reason, I don't know why.
You don't wanna go backwards again and have to double it?
Are we gonna gain this number, then? Oh, we're, we're getting to it, yeah.
That, I don't think that, that was for the special rates.
Yeah, that's coming up.
Let's just, that's in, that's in this one.
Yeah.
That, that paper you have with the blue highlights on it, with the special rates.
That's coming up.
That's basically this ordinance that we're talking about now, the...
But we're gonna, we're gonna gain that's much more.
Fourteen thousand each, yeah.
Because, we can't, so the attorney explained it, you got that, you guys had the emails from the attorney in there too. So, we can't even give a reduced rate to the city itself because of our water and sewer loans, because we have an ordinance in there from the USDA, so we can't, so we, it was, it's not just, there was, um, Iowa code plus our USDA loan with the ordinance there, the USDA...
Which ones are we missing on here, cause there were nine of them last time, and there's only...
No, I don't think it was nine.
Seven right now.
Yeah, this is all of them.
Was it?
It was library, museum, fire, ambulance, fairgrounds, memorial hall.
Oh, no, we got two built, that's right, we just gonna do the one building there.
Oh, you're looking at that, I was shooting, sorry.
No, I, I, this is right, I was thinking of, we, we did have nine, but there...
It was more than one.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. So this, this amount, we had that, the budget cut too. Is that coming to play with us?
So basically by doing the minimum on all these, the fourteen, five, twenty-one, sixty-one, would go into water, for the sewer, water and sewer each year.
Yeah. We, we have to do this no matter what, but you guys can vote, that's up to the council, however you want, that says that if you decide you wanna give water, continue, continue doing exactly what we're doing, but if we do, we have to pay this much into sewer for the memorial, right out of our general.
That's gonna come out of our budget, the city council.
Yeah.
Well, every, every one of these here's taking money in, so, there shouldn't be no reason...
Yeah, yeah, so that's, so it has to come out of general fund, which is property tax.
That's what I mean, it's gonna save everybody in town money, but...
Yes.
Yep.
Yes.
The Fair Board is already set up to pay there, so...
And you, you see where, um, and Jones County auditor answered me back, you guys got that email, that was not a problem for them at all. Um, so...
So I mean, if you give one for you, then you're gonna have to give them, I mean, you're gonna open up a...
That's where the regulatory law comes in, play with that, yeah. So, it's up to you guys, whatever you wanna do, we just had to give it to you, and you guys make the decision.
Make the decision.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do you need a motion, or?
Yeah, we need to know what we're gonna do, so we're just gonna go with the, are we gonna remove the special rates? So the first one is the first reading of an ordinance to amend walk, water bulk rates slash remove special rates. So, I think we talked about the bulk water, and we decided that we're not gonna do anything with that, correct?
Correct.
We're gonna leave it at the old charge, or this new one I got here, the fifteen and the sixty.
The fif, where's that one?
I thought that's fifteen per thousand with a minimum of sixty.
Yeah, that's the new.
Okay, that's the new.
What was the old one?
Um, ten, ten, and...
Three hundred thirty-five.
Okay. Okay. And then we're, so, so it's fifteen and sixty, and then we're gonna remove the special weights for the...
Anybody that has it.
Anybody that's here, so...
So City Hall will still have to, will pay ours, and then it'll come out of general fund and go into both, yeah.
Yeah, go water, sewer side.
And I, that would discuss, it's a fireman's meeting too, about their old building, about, we said, we're gonna have to start paying the minimum, at least the minimum of the old building. And what, what about the new building, whether...
There's no line or nothing hooked, it's just, we, we got toilet, we only got toilet in one building.
Yeah, I know we do, that's what I'm saying, we...
So the one oh nine eighty-two is what they're gonna pay, that's it, weird to discuss that.
We're probably supposed to pay one oh nine eighty-two on the other building, cause we got water going in there too. The hydrant, the hydrant.
It's a fire hydrant.
It's all that's in there, is...
Well, I know, yeah.
That water's only used for fire.
Well, I know, I agree, I know that, but I mean...
But it needs to be accounted for, so...
Yeah.
And can't we put a meter bit at the old fire station to watch for the leaks on the toilet? Or is that something that, it's a.
It could be done.
I don't know where you're gonna, well, you're gonna have to put it probably outside, cause I don't.
Yeah, the meter pits.
It'd have to be outside, because there's, I don't, that meter is back in the corner underneath our, that countertop. I think, I don't think there's much room under there.
Yeah, they just put the meter outside.
Where it's going in.
Yep.
I mean, has that building, it's never gone over the minimum, has it?
The biggest thing that they're worried about is.
It's the toilet. Yeah, the toilet leak, then we could catch it. You know, we'd have one of those new meters that was.
Yeah, we'd read and send the alarms.
There's a leak.
Well, the deputies on the bill will tell you if it's leaking, cause they use it all the time.
But that would fix the DNR situation there too, we have the meter on that building.
Yeah. So. I mean, unless somebody can fit in the cabinet, get to the old meter and pull that one out and put a new one in.
Well, it might, they might be able to do.
I think they're ones.
Is it just straight pipe?
Yeah, I don't think there is a meter, I think just a valve, shut off valve on there. I haven't looked, seen, been under there, seen for a long time, but I think there's just a valve there.
And the new ones will be a lot better anyway, I mean, put that one in and.
It'll, it'll let you guys know if there's anything going on immediately.
Yes.
It's not gonna change.
And it's gonna help the fire department anyway, cause if there is something that's not going over the minimum.
And then if there is a leak or aware of it, we don't want that toilet in it, like Sherry said with that DNR thing, where it says put the meter on the, did you see that on the eyes? That would help, that would do that, take care of that.
So would you guys, would you guys investigate to see if you can get one to fit in there? Yeah.
And then report back, if it looks like you can get it done, then let's get it done. So anyway, back to the.
Well, Rod can come down, I'll just have Rod look at it. Open it up and let Rod go in there and make the decision.
That's fine, cause it'd be cheaper in the long run if we could get it back in the.
Right.
Inside, instead of putting it outside in a meter pit.
Pipe me up, we'll do.
Cause it's like six or seven hundred bucks for a meter pit.
Yeah. It's a pain in the butt getting to it, I know that.
So, anyway, back to this, so first reading of an ordinance to amend the, the water bulk rates and remove special rates. Do I have a motion to approve that? Kyle, do I have a second? Kevin? We'll take role, Kyle, Kevin, Craig, and Steve.
Yep.
Okay, H, discuss a possible action to waive the second reading of an ordinance to amend bulk water rates and remove special rates. Kevin, do I have a second? Kyle? We'll take role, Kyle, Kevin, Craig, and Steve.
Yep.
Discuss a possible action, the final reading of an ordinance to amend the water bulk rates and to remove special rates. Do I have a motion, Kevin, do I have a second? Steve? Take role, Kyle, Kevin, Craig, and Steve.
Yep.
Okay.
Hey Steve, sorry.
Yes.
We should meet live for OJ and do the same conversation.
Sure, which one, which one are you?
In.
In, okay. Discuss a possible action to set aside three hundred dollars for an implomation, implement?
Imputation.
Thank you, project as a part of the downtown walk around organized through J C E D.
Thanks, guys. So, a couple of years ago, as you may remember, we had Deb Brown in town, she was consultant that we brought in through Limestone Love. She helped talk about getting volunteers and people active and truly trying to do some different things. That's how we spurred some of the catalyst building project, got some, you know, some of the people I care of, Kenner, and then fired up to that Wyoming Better Development Committee and whatnot. Uh, Jim Thompson was in town last week, he's from Iowa Economic Development Authority, and he's the one that closed, is closing out the catalyst grant project for us. While he was here, he mentioned that there was a program they do, which I've been involved with in the past, called the Downtown Walk Around. What they do is they bring in two or three consultants from the state, they walk through your downtown, give you some varied concrete ideas, you can do X, Y, or Z. Uh, things you can do in a couple of years worth of time, PP, people dedicated to it, the city's involved, building and business owners wanna get involved, and that way they just give you ideas on how to keep your downtown sort of spruced up. It mainly, it only affects the downtown, so we go from, you know, Wix down, probably Dollar General area, and maybe back as far as the school. Uh, so it wouldn't be the entire town, it'd be that main business corridor area. Now, they started something new this year called a county walk around, where they do several of ones. So they come to town for like a week, and they do Wyoming, they do OJ, they do Olwood, they try to do some of the smaller towns that can't get these on their own. Uh, generally, that's a three hundred dollar, uh, fee. What I'm asking the council to consider is approving three hundred dollars to set aside contingent upon Jay said paying for the consultants. So we pay for the consultants, they come to town, do their walk around, and when they give you the list here, you know, ten things, you guys put three hundred dollars towards accomplishing one of them. So that way, instead of paying for the consultants and getting nothing done, if we can pay for them, and you guys have that three hundred dollars that you would've spent on them towards the project. So we won't meet until the end of the month, but I didn't wanna wait till May because of the timing. Uh, so I'm asking if you guys would do that contingent upon us approving it, if you're, if you're interested in doing so.
What do you think, gentlemen? I think it'd be good.
Three hundred bucks, pretty cheap.
Yep, so, do I have a motion to approve that? Kevin, do I have a second? Kyle? We'll take role, Kyle.
Yep.
Kevin.
Craig.
Yep, and Steve.
Yep.
And I'll let you know if it doesn't happen, but otherwise, I'll be back in touch with you.
All right, thank you. All right, moving back, discuss a possible action, first reading of an ordinance to amend mayor and council.
So we go from two thousand to two thousand four hundred, and then sixty ever use or over twelve, Carolina. And then the council will go from forty to sixty. And you haven't had a raise the whole time I've been here, so.
I was just gonna say that, like, thirty years, has it changed in thirty years?
I ain't going for the money, so.
Yeah, I, I mean.
And it wouldn't go in effect until after the next election, so January first of twenty twenty-four.
Maybe we'll get ten more people wanting to get on if we raise it.
Well, that's a possibility.
Yeah, right.
Throw it in the sewer project.
Does what, Owen?
I think this is what Loudoun, I got it from Loudoun, but they had just raised theirs to, not Loudoun, Clarence.
Gentlemen, what do you think?
Sure, the money'd be nice, but like, I'm like Kyle, I said, I'm, people already complained about what it costs, everything, then we'd vote ourselves a raise, and we sound like politicians in DC.
Well, but we haven't had a raise, like Sherry said, over thirty years, so.
I would, uh, I would suggest you guys take it. I know you guys taking some grief over your water deals.
I was gonna say.
This is just one issue out of probably many. I was on the council years ago, you, you catch grief, take the sixty bucks.
Yeah.
You're not getting it right now anyway, you gotta follow through with the election first, so take it.
No, I'm not gonna make, I'm not gonna.
I get enough to panic anyhow. We'll just go get it done then.
Okay, Kyle, do I have a second? Steve? Take, take role, Kyle.
Yep.
Kevin.
Yep.
Craig.
Yep.
And Steve.
Hell, if you guys would happen to run or happen to quit and not get reelected, the next person that gets on, it ain't gonna be enough.
Okay, discuss a possible action, um, approving sharing agreement with Midland for HR for twenty, twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year.
Has that been working out for us?
We haven't used any of the agreements yet, but the school gets credit.
It's there, I mean.
Yeah, it's there.
If we need it. Okay, Greg, do I have a second? Steve? Take role, Kyle.
Yep.
Kevin.
Yep.
Craig.
Yep.
And Steve.
Yep.
Discuss a possible action, uh, approving sharing agreement with Midland for operations director twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
We haven't probably used that either, have we?
But, like I said, it gives.
Sherry, what is a sharing agreement with?
So, the school approach that's about it, um, they get, um, funding or points, I can't remember what it was. Um, for having these in place, so like, the, they were short on staff for the HR personnel manager, they could, um, hire Michelle, and they would have to pay back her wages and all that. Um, and then the same with operations director, they have Clay Pesca. He does like diesel stuff and all too, and then like Facebook and that, but we're not doing those, I mean, that's not that simple, but, um, the other one is the business, school business official is Nancy Potter. So if we needed some technical IT faculty, we could hire her.
They can come over here and do it, and we can go over there and help them.
Kind of a win-win for the city, I mean, for everybody.
Okay, do I have a motion on the operations director? Craig, do I have a second? Steve? Take role, Kyle.
Yes.
Kevin.
Yeah.
Craig.
Yep.
Steve.
Yep.
Discuss a possible action, approving sharing agreement with Midland for the school business office twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Same thing, so, Greg, do I have a second? Kevin? Take role. Kyle.
Yes.
Kevin.
Yeah.
Craig.
Yep.
Steve.
Yep.
Okay. Clerk's report. A, discuss and approve a shot attending clerk's institute July twenty twenty-three.
Oh my God, that's for, is it?
Yeah.
Did I make this smarter? I think that's for you.
On the side.
I'll make the water.
I'll second that.
Kyle, Craig, we'll take role. Kyle.
Yep.
Kevin.
Yeah.
Craig.
Yep.
Steve.
Yep.
Mayor and council reports, items for the next agenda.
Uh, sewer special rates, I'll get that out of that ordinance, and then, um, Rod said street list, so I'll get that on there. And then we'll have a urban real property taxing for Henry's, we just got it today. I think you guys have the sheriff's report in this group.
Yep.
We need to get a, well, parking sign on that. Once Dave gets that done, they're still parking on that corner. Even though it's, it's marked off on the deal, if we get the sign up, then it's, I mean, it's gonna be a lot more noticeable.
Hopefully.
Yeah. And it's still, like I said, there's a lot of stuff.
I know, somebody parks on it, and no, they ain't supposed to park there.
That's what I made, it's, it's hard going around the corner, I mean, I got to deal with it nightly, and I ain't saying just because of me, but if we get a sign, uh, in the winter time, you know, it's obviously snow, people ain't gonna see that.
Yeah.
So if we just get the sign up on that pole, or right there in front of it, and maybe Dave can put it in when he does the concrete right there.
Okay.
Possibility, yeah.
You know, before we go stick something in there, though.
Yeah.
Or, yeah, cause he's gonna do the, cause he's gonna raise that up, you know, the curb's gonna be up flush with the.
I don't know if this got this one to have anything to do with that business or whatever, but. This guy was supposed to bring up the cement and the piles of stuff at the state shed that's we've done several years ago, or not, we had to get rid of. But you remember, uh, someone's told you, Steve, I'm leaving that, I'm gonna get that on the gym.
Kyle's dad said, uh, bring that up, I forgot all about it.
And that should be, the state hasn't finished this project yet, they haven't built us for that yet.
The new sidewalks?
The parking area that we did that state project. Cause wasn't that concrete from this, well, that's from the sidewalks.
That's from the sidewalks.
Okay.
Now, I.
That's, that's from the contractor though, ain't it?
Yeah.
From what I was told, that they were dumping it out, but it was all going to Laramie, so the DNR went by there, and they seen it out there, and they raised a big stake about it, so then they had to go somewhere with it, so they put it down there, and that's what I was told, I don't know how, but if it does not have any steel in it, I know a place where a guy will take it, but if it's got iron, steel in it, uh, Gary, Mark Baker out here, but.
Yeah.
Mark Baker said, if there's no steel in it, he said, I, I got a place you can dump it.
Well, but, again, we shouldn't have to pay to haul it or dump it.
Right.
It's not our project, it was part of the.
Remember a number of years ago, we brought that up when all that stuff was down there, that we.
Yeah, and we got it all cleaned up, and we did, and so, do we have a project manager or something from that?
I'll find that, yeah.
And there's gotta be contact from the DOT.
Yeah, you can tell, tell.
So, get rid of that.
Yeah, I forgot.
You mentioned it.
You keep on it, cause there's gotta be some rodents getting in there.
Oh, yeah, yeah, and that project is probably about to close if it hasn't closed.
And another thing, uh, has anybody said anything to the, about the fox we have running around town?
It might be gone.
No, it isn't, I seen it yesterday.
What are you gonna do? I mean.
I mean, should we, some people say they think it's rabid, cause it's not scared of anything, but, uh, do we need to contact the DNR?
We did, we did contact the DNR, had a lot of phone calls on it, and what he said was that as long as it wasn't, not hunting or seizing or trapping, and as long as it wasn't being a nuisance, like attacking people or.
Well, now Jeff Egan House said it.
I heard that.
It tracked, went after his dog.
I did hear, I did hear that, but, and it's.
They wanted to try to trap it.
They want, who want?
Ashley called and said.
Oh, they're gonna try to trap it?
Yeah.
But I have no problem, but I mean, we can relocate or whatever, but somebody else said too, maybe, this is about the time they have pups, so if it's a female, it's a pup.
That's what somebody else said, is that.
And Riley Williams said he seen it going into that house, East Allen's down there, that empty one. He said he seen it going in, like, under, in a window or something, into the basement or something.
Okay. That's good to know.
Craig, you catch it, and I'll give you permission to do whatever you want with it.
We even got a rooster running around there too.
Everybody says it looks straggly or whatever, but what I seen yesterday, it didn't look all that bad, it just looked like small dogs. He's quiet.
What's going on with that dirt or that gravel and stuff?
That was the, the DOT brought that in, and they were using it for part of the, the resurfacing project on sixty-four, and they said we could use what they wanted, we wanted out of there, um, other than that, that's all I remember. That why they didn't use that, uh, all up, I would've figured that would've been gone, so I don't know what the story is with the rest of it. That's why it was put there.
Now, there's a post office parking lot, it's got some big assholes in it. Can I haul something in there and level it up, or?
Oh, why not?
Right, free for whatever.
The city can use it.
Right.
So.
And then, I think we have.
Yeah.
Is that the break? Yeah.
Yep.
So that's kind of an up to date thing, um, the cars on State Street were actually moved this weekend. So that, I was surprised, I thought there'd be a battle there.
Yeah.
And, um, so that, two twelve East Jones Street, that's the house you were talking about, Chris. If there's, if there's shit in there, we need to send, have them send a letter.
That's, Riley said that at the fireman's meeting, well, that's fireman's meeting, he said he seen it go in there, and yesterday I seen it down by that lagoon for the dollars, you seen it down there, just like sun in it, so.
Yeah.
Call the, call the telephone company tomorrow and ask.
Okay. Okay. So, I just wanted to give you an updated list on what he just sent out today. And then I did. Um, I have not heard anything back from the bus call about the contractors, so I'm gonna try and get him to share all and see. He got a second courtesy letter, that gives you ninety days, so that would make it, he has until June sixth.
And his first letter came in November last year.
Letter was sent in ten eighteen of twenty twenty-two was your first one.
Yeah.
Yep, then probably, the next step will be to proceed with the lawyer.
Yeah. Next, shoot an email to Doug today about, I guess he knows what he said would be.
This one here.
I have some of them, you need to go ask her.
Anything else? Yeah, we got the last two.
All right.
Um, discuss a possible action, approving liquor license renewal for racks. Kyle, do I have a second? Craig? Take role, Kyle.
Yep.
Kevin.
Yeah.
Craig.
Yep.
Steve.
Yep.
Sheriff's report is there, we don't have any representatives, so. Anything else? I will take a motion to adjourn.
Just, um, we talked about doing something on the, like, going around the corner there by Suzie Shavers. Are we still planning on there, or you know where I'm talking about?
On both sides of the street.
Oh, making the apron?
Yeah, cause there, there's ruts on each side, isn't it?
Mm-hmm. I mean, I don't know if we can put a curb and gutter in that or cement that and it's a one and done deal, I mean, it can.
Yeah.
I mean.
The unfortunate part is we had the opportunity to do it a few years ago and the council at that moment in time didn't want anything to do with it. But yes, we can fix that.
Do we need to talk, can we talk to Dave when he come in and do that sidewalk, have him look at it? He's the one that did the concrete going out of town.
Yeah, he, yeah. Yeah, we could talk to him. We could talk to him, you guys.
Get a quote on it.
Cause we need to do something, when it's muddy, they travel all the way down.
And it comes all the way down to the church and to come around that corner, we get an inch of rain, mud comes all the way to the church.
Okay.
Well, it's, it's bad up there.
Yeah.
Like I said.
I'll talk to Dave, I'll, I'll get a quote before the next meeting.
So, hopefully they won't have to do too much with the new ramps and everything.
We'll probably have to talk to the property owners, cause they're gonna be getting up onto there, I don't know how far it goes, to make it nice around.
They, they would, there would be.
Huh?
One's died.
No, we sold that ten years ago.
It would be a double, they'd have a double ramping, Kyle, so.
Right.
You know, cause they're gonna have both sides of the street, they'll have the north side, whatever the DOT right away is, and then whatever our right away is for that part.
Yep.
For that street, so.
Something, said, this DNR thing, it says, summary of recommendations, ensure water mains are purpose size and fire protection. That's for fire. We're not.
This, this standard boilerplate, do they want everything to be a six inch main?
Well, I know, but.
It's not gonna happen, so.
It shouldn't happen when they put it in there, but.
Well, but it didn't get thought of at that point in time, but all the new stuff is six inch main, so. Okay, nothing else? Do I have a motion adjourned? Kyle, do I have a second? Steve, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Who's in here? Thank you, gentlemen.